They have blooms on them, blossoms.
Welcome everyone to the Eugene City Council Work Session for April 11th. We have some really important items up on our agenda today, but before we get to those, Councilor Pryor has asked to speak to us for a moment.
Yes, thank you very much. I was going to make a request of the city manager and since this is a request that might require more than a couple of hours, I was wanting to get the council's kind of agreement on it. And this has to do with the stories we've been reading in the paper about the neighborhood groups requiring funding from developers in order to not file claims against them. And I wanted to have and the city manager do a review of that from the city's perspective since neighborhood associations are official groups of the city of Eugene. If neighborhood groups are requiring funding from developers in order to either press or not press complaints or cases or contested issues with regard to that development, I want to find out what the city's position is with regard to that. I've been getting a number of calls from folks asking, is it the city's policy, they use the word extort, I don't want to use the word extort, is it the city's policy to extort money from developers in order to get their agreement on whether or not to proceed with them? And I would like to get the city manager to review what we've learned so far, to let us know what the city's specific policy is around that and how that relates to the authority of neighborhood associations. That may take a couple more hours, so I can't just ask for it without getting the rest of the council's agreement to have the city manager prepare a memo for us explaining the situation.
So Mayor, are you, or John, excuse me, are you requesting, do you need a motion or do you just need a head nod? Because I think this is a very good idea.
I think we just need head nods because I would agree with Chris that it will take more than a couple hours, which is fine. We're happy to do the work and it's just a matter of ensuring that the council understands that, so it doesn't require a formal motion from my perspective. Mr.?
I think the talk is that today we don't have a discussion of the actual content that we're talking about now, whether we have a meeting to talk about the content. So I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, I was going to ask questions about what we want to include in that, but this is just, we're going to schedule meetings before he goes and does any work and gets...
Well, I believe that's true. I think you can tell I would...
I would really like to see that contain a fairly comprehensive scope of the city's position of what the authority of a neighborhood association is.
Yeah, Councilor Brown.
But whether it's a neighborhood or not, an individual could still, is this like a Luba appeal or something? Is that what the general...
No, this would be an action that the neighborhood association would file against a particular development, whether it's in court or otherwise. I would get the details of exactly what involved in this memo, so we could talk about it later on.
I don't believe that neighborhoods are extorting everyone. If they are, it would be illegal. I don't see any point in spending a lot of time on an accusation.
So I just wanted to say the obvious. So any individual can address any organization or group of people as they wish, but if they are wearing a name tag that identifies them as a neighborhood group, and if there's several of them, then I think that is our responsibility. And I don't really know how this all went about, so I just would like to support moving ahead with this.
So the question before you is to ask the manager to follow up on this. If we have any objection around the table, then we'll put a motion out, but otherwise, if I have a few objects, then let's put a motion out.
I move that we ask the city manager to prepare a memo outlining what we've been talking about in terms of an investigation of allegations or claims that the neighborhood association, acting in its official capacity, is requiring the payment of money by developers in order to approve or agree to their request to develop.
Seconded. Motion seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. Those in, and Councilor Zelenka?
Yes.
Dix in favor and in opposition, two, so it passes. And city manager, I hope that part of this will be an actual discussion with each of the neighborhood associations about their understanding of this, because I think it may not reflect neighborhood associations at all, and we should have a full understanding of that.
Our intent will be is to provide a full just evaluation of the whole situation on, as we've heard the conversations, so that will be our intent.
Thank you. So we're going to move on now to the first work session item, which is the Opportunity Eugene Report and Recommendations. And before I hand this over to city manager, I just want to take a brief moment to really thank Michael and Chuck and all of our staff who spend so much time and energy on this. I want to thank councilors Pat and George and Andrea and Chris for diligently attending all these meetings and being part of this process. And I want to thank the Oregon Consensus folks for helping with the facilitation. Many people know this was a big, huge task force, and Michael's going to describe it in more detail, but I just wanted to say it took an immense amount of goodwill and cooperation from everybody there for that to move as well as it did, given the intensity of the issue and the high involvement of engagement of so many people. They had an amazing amount of commitment to reducing homelessness and providing services as needed. This is, I also want to say, just because I feel like it needs to be said as we go into this conversation, that this isn't a Eugene issue, this is a national issue. And we are experiencing it in our city. It's compounded by a deep recession that we've been through, and we don't really know how long it's going to be before we see any relief. We've also seen, and all of us, I see faces in this room that I can speak to, we've experienced reduction in funding of services, treatment programs, and other options that would, and that puts pressure on people in our community and on our community itself. So I'm just again, very, very appreciative of the work that people have put in. Today is just the first in a conversation with this council. So this is a report, and then what you choose to do with it is, will take us from here. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be turning over to Michael and some others to come up to the table, and I'll step aside so they'll have enough room up here. But I also just want to express my appreciation to Michael, relatively new into the city team, and I think has just stepped up and done a really nice job. And I would echo also, Mayor, that we, from our perspective, aren't looking for any particular motions today, other than just to provide the group an opportunity to present their report, so.
Michael?
Welcome.
As mentioned, me and my little committee here will be here to present on the Opportunity Eugene Task Force on Homelessness Solutions on our final report and Task Force recommendations.
You can put that back up for a moment. That is from the registered guard, and that is from the first meeting we had at St. Mary's Church, the largest convening of the task force. Today I'd like to just break down a presentation a little bit. We'll be going through an overview of the task force, its procedurally, the task force's final recommendations, and then give a brief synopsis of some momentum in the community regarding both the task force and homelessness issues. I'm joined today by Dan Bryant of First Christian Church, Michael Carrigan of the Community Alliance of Lane County, David Mandelblatt of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, and Claire Saret of the Human Service Commission to assist in the presentation and provide for answers to any questions that follow from the presentation. So just to go over the original task force charge, it was to develop recommendations addressing needs and impacts for our unhoused community members. The task force was to report back to city council within 90 days. The task force appointed by the mayor, the members will include city councilors, community members, representatives from Occupy Eugene, nonprofit human agencies, human service agencies, and the Human Rights Commission.
And you're all human.
Given that starting list, membership was big and huge, as the mayor mentioned moments ago. We topped out at 58 people, representing a much broader base. That included city council and the mayor, city staff, human services, the faith community, neighborhood leadership, Human Rights Commission, the Sustainability Commission, Occupy Eugene, and community members, including homeless members of our community. The task force was facilitated by Laurel Singer and Peter Harkema of Oregon Consensus, with the assistance of Community Mediation Services here in Eugene, and administrative staff were both Chuck Crockett and myself. In a little less than 90 days, we had six meetings. Meetings began as two-hour meetings, but once the scope of work became to unfold, we realized we needed three-hour meetings, so the final four turned to three-hour meetings. The first two meetings were focused primarily on establishing the goals and structure of the task force and kind of the rules of the game. The last meetings were more on problem solving and developing the recommendations we'll be going over today. There was also a planning committee that met five times in between the larger task force meetings. This group, the purpose of whose is to set agendas for the task force, as well as develop recommendations related to the ongoing work of the task force. It played a very crucial role in trying to help to bring the larger group together. Given the size of the group and the complexity of the issues involved, group work and subcommittee work was essential. Early in the process, groups developed and presented the most pressing issues related to homelessness. These findings were grouped into the following priority areas: day use, housing and shelter, laws and barriers, wealth generation and economic equity, healthcare, sustainability, and community engagement. Subcommittees were developed to further research these issues related to the prioritized areas mentioned before, and develop suggestions for action that may be taken to address these issues. The suggested actions or implementation items were then prioritized for immediate, ready for immediate action, intermediate, and long-term. These 25 implementation items serve as possible steps to address recommendations that were later developed by the task force. So now we'll move on to the recommendations. Acknowledging that the task force would have to kind of narrow down the original list of 25 and provide succinct recommendations to council, work began on kind of fine-tuning the spirit and work behind the implementation items to find them down to six recommendations. The final six recommendations include identify and establish potential sites, create and support day use community centers, improve traditional and non-traditional healthcare access, continue and expand existing services to the homeless, improve laws and ordinances that criminalize and block homeless individuals, and create a commission to continue to explore homelessness solutions. First recommendation is identify and establish potential sites. This recommendation was to agree to direct city staff to work with community members to identify potential sites in order to establish a safe and secure place to be, open by October 1, 2012, independently financed with oversight by a not-for-profit organization or agency. This was agreed upon language by the task force. What did not find consensus among all the members was necessarily a definition of a safe and secure place to be. As mentioned in the report, many within the task force felt a camp-style development or site or sites were needed. Other opinions on this kind of ran the gamut. Some felt that continuing the expansion, exploring car camping and tent camping sites might be suitable. Some of the action-related implementation items that, originally this recommendation was an implementation item, and people felt it strong enough to move as a full-on recommendation. Other related implementation items would be approve a conditional use permit change to enable expansion of the Eugene Mission, increasing occupancy by over 50 percent, and also a change in the number of legal car and tent camping spaces to reflect a range rather than absolute limit, essentially increasing it from three to six spaces per site. Second recommendation was to create and support day use community centers. The task force has identified a critical need for more day centers and for the increased capacity of existing day centers. There are currently five day centers in Eugene: Hosea and Looking Glass, who both serve youth populations, the Lindholm Service Center, First Place Family Center, and the Eugene Mission. The task force recommends finding ways to increase existing day center capacity and potentially add more day centers. It was repeated that there are limits to each of these day centers. They all do serve a particular segment of the homeless population, so maybe exploring some of those limitations might be worthwhile in focusing increased capacity efforts or adding to new day centers. The third recommendation was to improve traditional and non-traditional healthcare access. The combination of mental health issues, substance abuse, chronic homelessness, and physical illness affect a disproportionate number of homeless individuals. A few related implementation items from the list of 25 include city endorsement and support for the new street outreach program that is being formed as an outgrowth of the Occupy Eugene Medical Program. The city agrees to work with existing local healthcare organizations to identify ways to increase access to healthcare, including providing organizational and/or staff support as needed, as well as encouraging peer support mental health services specific to the needs of the homeless. One common theme throughout the task force, and one of the final recommendations, was to continue and expand existing services to the homeless. You know, understand there is a breadth of services already existing within Eugene and Lane County that is suffering from funding cuts. The task force recommends that no further funding be diverted for increased efforts, you know, from existing social services to finance any ongoing services or new services. The fifth recommendation was to improve laws and ordinances that criminalize and block homeless individuals. It was acknowledged that many city ordinances, codes, and policies have the unintended effect of criminalizing life-sustaining activities. In addition, they may serve to make it more difficult for people to access more permanent housing and shelter. Some of the related implementation items include reviewing the offenses that trigger exclusion in the downtown core and drop the ones that are essentially nuisance crimes, and direct the chief of police to direct his officers to cease and desist requesting exclusion for violations for such things as riding with sidewalk chalk, resisting on or against a plan or, resting on or against a plan or a wall, sleeping on private property, or illegal camping. Final recommendation was to create a commission to continue to explore homelessness solutions. The task force felt the need to strengthen the voice of these recommendations and ensure continued innovation is needed. That'll be important for an ongoing voice to champion the topic and keep it in the forefront of policy issues before city council. It was also mentioned that the body should work to create community engagement surrounding homelessness issues. So those were the six final recommendations. I felt it germane to this, to discuss some of the outcomes that have been either, are beginning to happen or have been happening throughout the course of the task force, you know, either if not directly related to the task force, definitely a thematic to the task force. Some momentum around day use. St. Vincent de Paul will be requesting funding from Community Development Block grant funds for the expansion of the Lindholm Service Station. That'll include a quadrupling of the seating areas, so going from seating from 20 to 80, the addition of 125 storage units, and the addition of a commercial kitchen that would serve as a food for Lane County kitchen site. Catholic Community Services is also exploring a private funding to add lockers to their site on 7th. Housing and shelter, you know, council did vote to continue the expansion of car and tent camping through the end of the calendar year and to be reviewed later on this year. Eugene Mission will be requesting a conditional use permit to increase their capacity by over 50 percent. Some developments related to healthcare, Whitebird will also be requesting funding, community development funding, for the expansion of its Chrisless outpatient drug and addiction treatment program, which affects homeless and low-income people, they serve quite a few homeless and low-income people throughout the community. As well as Eugene Mission and Whitebird talking about a partnership to add an actual medical center to the Eugene Mission site. Furthermore, kind of the drumbeat, further drumbeat behind the community is the recent LTD survey, the EMX West Eugene Extension Survey, where the second highest priority, most important issue in Eugene, just behind unemployment and creation of jobs, was helping the homeless. And I know a number of our people at Occupy, as well, following the closing of the camp, have received an outpouring of community input and participation in their events following that, so there's a general feeling that there's momentum behind this task force and the work they're doing, and behind homelessness issues in the community. Before we open this discussion, I was wondering if there's anything the mayor or council, who are members of the task force, would like to add before we open this up for any questions or discussion?
So, yes, you want to... Yes. Oh, I know, and I moved my hand. I'll wait for the lights to come on. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and I feel like there was credit given to me. I only managed to attend two of the five meetings. I had other parts of my life that I needed to contend with. So, but the meetings that I was at, I was very impressed with the amount of work that was being done in front and behind the scenes, and that there were so many people willing to participate, once again, volunteering their time, looking to see what best solutions we can come up with. And it was a very, it was a varied group of individuals, and I want to thank the ones that are in the audience for, that are here, that participated. I do have a lot of questions and comments, but I'll wait until we get to that point.
George, anything you want to say?
No, not really. I'm going.
Chris?
Thank you. This is the second collaborative process I've been involved in, and the thing about collaborative processes are, they're messy, they're emotional, they're time-consuming, and can be very frustrating. But oftentimes, if you really want to try to create solutions, it's often really the best option open to you. And this process was no different than that. And to expect to have dealt substantially or even solved the problem of homelessness in 90 days in a few meetings would have been unrealistic. So for me, of these six recommendations, perhaps the one that is the most critical for me is to create a commission to continue to talk about the subject, because there is still a lot more that needs to be worked out. And if you asked each person on the task force, what's the most important one of these recommendations, you might have a different person giving you a different answer, which in and of itself says there needs to be some additional work done on this. I don't think the city council can just adopt this report without having more conversation. I think we can be very well informed by the work that was done, and it was good work. But I think there is many things that still need to be talked about. If I went straight to the heart of the matter and said, what was the issue that was one of the most significant ones for conversation, it's the first one, the establishment of potential sites. That's a very significant issue for all parties in this entire conversation, and what that means is still up for debate, is not resolved right now. Is a site to be intended for transitional or temporary housing for homeless folks? Or is it an effort to create a lifestyle permanent encampment for folks? And what is the city's role and responsibility in that? Those are things that still need to be considered and discussed. At the same time, there are folks that are feeling that this is taking far longer than it should take, and there's others that are feeling this need to be moving at a very deliberate pace. This is, this is a very big issue. I'm just bringing that up as all the questions that still need to be resolved. So for me, in order to still continue to make something good out of what we've done so far, we need to continue to work on this and not say, we've ended our work. We either accept or don't accept the report. We either do or don't do what these recommendations are, and it's just a pass or a fail. It requires us to continue to talk about this subject, and so if we did anything, it would be to continue to explore the solutions that are available to us and to continue on with this work, maybe not in exactly the form it's in now, but to at least to continue on.
Thank you. It's difficult to follow that, Chris, because you really wrapped everything up very nicely in just a few moments speaking. The one thing that I would like to say is that it was a large group, not unlike the fact that Envision Eugene was a large group. Envision Eugene had a couple of years to do the work. This group had a really tight timeframe to do the work. And what characterized the group to me was its diversity. In its diversity, there was very little acrimony involved at all. It was very much a well-facilitated, well-spoken meeting. Things did break down a couple of times, remarkably not more than they did break down. And I would like to compliment staff in particular, and Michael, for the outstanding job that you did in just wrapping things up nicely, bringing things together on the numerous occasions that you did. And as the mayor had stated, the facilitator of the group did a pretty decent job of, I think, I heard somebody use the term herding cats. But it was, it was a diverse group that had a lot of different things to say, and remarkably came up with a relatively understandable recommendation. So thank you very much.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank everyone on the, on the task force and staff, Michael especially, it was really good. Well, you know, time's a-wastin', we really need to do something between now and next fall, and I know a lot of people, as you said, Chris, did feel frustration. Some people thought it was over-mediated, I'm not sure about that. There was a lot of facilitation. I'd kind of like to just dive right into this. I mean, but I did have a question of all the members of the task team that are here and staff. Has anybody visited Dignity Village in Portland? Actually gone there? Okay.
Well, some, some members of the task force had.
They have? Okay. All right. Because I've just been kind of Googling around, and it's, it's very interesting. It's only 60 people, but, and they basically were self-selected and started this in the year 2000 downtown on abandoned land, and of course were hassled by the cops, and it caused tremendous controversy. Portland being a bigger city, it was probably a lot more than what happened here with the Occupy movement and the blending of the homeless population. And finally, they decided they moved it out to near the airport on a piece of vacant city land, and they're pretty much self-governing. They operate on $3,000 a month, and that's, you know, porta-potties, showers, internet access, pretty, you know, from what I could see on the internet, seems like a pretty cool place I intend to visit as soon as possible. Does anyone know the name of the place in Seattle? There's another encampment in Seattle. If anybody knows, can I call on somebody in back in the audience knows? I just want to know the name because I want to research...
Call it Chair Wheel.
Chair Wheel. Chair Wheel? Chair Wheel. Okay, thank you. I have a feeling that if we can't come up with something, we will see a Dignity Village, probably maybe more than one, kind of self-starting themselves without any city involvement at all, kind of like what happened last year. So, you know, it could get messy, so I think we really ought to... Oh, and by the way, number one on the list, identify a site. Do the councilors remember the email from the chair of the Jefferson Westside Neighbors? Their board unanimously endorsed the site of the old Marine Corps Reserve Base on 13th, just east of Chambers, as they would welcome a car and tent camping site there. I have a poll, gone around and done a walking poll out of the neighborhood, it's in my word, I intend to do that, and see what, you know, the neighbors, the ones that don't necessarily attend the meetings think about that. But so, there's one site that's been identified, city-owned property, that's the starting point, and my time's almost up. Thanks.
Yeah, so before I, I hope we're going to hear from the task force members here, I just wanted to say that I don't look at this as just talking. I actually think these are, these are substantial recommendations that are being, they need to be fleshed out, but they are specific recommendations that they're asking us to look at, and we need to take each one of them seriously and look at them and see how and which way to move them forward or not. So I, I don't take these as sort of a lot of work, and then some of these being pushed to council, I take them as work that people work very hard on and think are the top ways to, they think we can address this situation. So I think that is a result of a lot of, of hard work, and it just takes, we have to take next steps in looking at these. I'd like to take it back to Michael and see if we have comments from members in the house.
Just in response to Councilor Brown's comments, I have yet to make it up to Dignity Village, but I did meet with the city of Portland staff related to their continuum of care, and Dignity Village did come up, and we do have a report, an audit of Dignity Village. I'd be happy to share with council. It kind of gives the city management side of the camp, so I think that'd be really helpful in seeing how we might want to move forward.
That would be tremendously helpful. Thanks.
And also, I worked with the president of Jefferson Westside Neighborhoods, Paul Conti, on that car camping site, and worked with the schools. It was a slow process because we tried to involve the whole local community, but it is seen as a success, and as soon as it dries up, we'll have some campers out there, so.
Okay.
So maybe if we could just start with Dan, and you could.
Sure. Dan Bryan, pastor at First Christian Church in the heart of Eugene. Much has already been said about some of the passion and the emotions in the meetings, and I would just like to speak to that, in part because one of the things we frequently heard has been referenced to the very unfortunate death that occurred that brought an end to the Occupy Eugene encampment. In my role of serving the downtown congregation for the last 21 years, I have been asked frequently to preside at a memorial service for the homeless on December 21st, Winter Solstice, I think probably four or five times. Every single time I've done that, there have been over 20 deaths of people who died on the street that we've remembered. Never has anyone said, we should close the streets of Eugene because of the 20-some people who have died on the streets of Eugene. I believe very much that this kind of effort of what we're talking about literally will save lives. There may be more deaths that will occur. Living on the street is very difficult, but this type of program truly has life-saving potential. People are already dying on the streets, and what we are talking about is, is changing that situation, and so there's a lot of passion behind this. People feel their lives are at threat, are being threatened. The other thing I want to speak to is the, what I think was a rather unfortunate column this morning in the paper, very good perspective, but I did speak with Galen Phipps at Shelter Care because the author was a intern at Shelter Care, and the column did not in any way represent Shelter Care's views. But we're not talking about an alternative between housing, adequate housing, and some kind of other place. We're talking about an alternative between no place to be and a legal place to be, an alternative between sleeping under bridges and peeing in bushes and sleeping in alleys between having a legal place to go. And we made a lot of jokes in our meetings about a legal place to go and what that means. But the language that we chose in the first recommendation was just a safe, secure place to be. Whether or not it's anything like Dignity Village or something entirely different remains to be seen. We're asking for the city council's endorsement of just that basic concept that we need to provide a legal, legal place, safe place where people can be in our society who otherwise do not have such a place. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Claire?
Yes, I'm Claire Saret. I'm the chair of the Human Services Commission, and I guess just what I'd like to say is I would really encourage councilors who weren't able to be part of this process to read the background materials, to read the other details of some of the recommendations which inform these more broad recommendations that we've presented here today. I think there's some very viable ideas in there that could be implemented with the city's support or just with the, with the city's encouragement. It doesn't even need to be city staff and city resources that are involved. And I do think, I really want to encourage the council to move forward on some of these pieces, even while you look at creating a homelessness commission. It is an urgent situation, and I would hate to see us delay taking some of these actions while we wait for that commission to be established, particularly the laws and ordinances review, the support of non-traditional healthcare access, and some of those pieces I think could get started while a homelessness commission is being considered. So that, that was what I wanted to ask of you.
Good for that. David?
Yeah, let me tell you a true story. It happened just this morning. Was walking over here, past the whole center, down, came down Pearl. There was a couple walking on the street, and one person, the wife, turned to the husband and said, where's the bathroom? They didn't know. We were within a shot of City Hall. As I walked on, I realized, there is no sign. They tell me that there's, that there's a public restroom here, but there's no sign. How can you want people to do the right thing and then not provide for them to do it? And I'm just picking on one very tiny part of this. At a time when we're talking about increasing downtown population, increasing business, increasing vibrancy, don't we need to give people a place to go?
Michael?
Yeah, I'm Michael Carrigan, Community Alliance of Lane County. Been doing, working in Lane County for over 45 years. And we have an opportunity now. I think the whole world is watching. What we've done here in Eugene is unique, the transition, Occupy Eugene, having that homeless commission. It's people rolling up their sleeves, trying to make this community a better place to live, and I think we need to be proud of, of, of that. We need to come up with new and innovative solutions, build on the great work that social service providers have done over the years. Occupy Eugene has brought new people, new energy into this process, so we have a great opportunity. I know that we have a, a group that meets weekly at Calc, Monday mornings at 10 o'clock. Place was packed last Monday, not just Occupy people, a broad section of the community wanting to come and, and get going. We can't, you know, we, we can't dawdle on this. We got to get moving as quickly as, as we can. And what I like in the report is this, says the city of Eugene, the task force agrees that housing is a basic human right as recognized by the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and such as freedom from cruel, inhuman, and degrading treatment should be immediately implement, including immediately ceasing punishing homeless persons for basic-like activities like sleeping or eating in public when they have nowhere else to go. So it's, we just, I, I live and work in the Whittaker neighborhood, and, you know, there's a lot of unhoused folks there, and I've gotten to know some as, as human beings. We have a couple of tent camps in the back at Calc now. We need more of that, and it's been a very positive experience for us. So I think that we can do the good work. I'm also urging folks to look for our common ground. It was a diverse group that met. I went to every meeting, every planning committee, you know, and usually it was like people rolling up their sleeves, getting the work done, but we had our moments, and that's going to, we're going to have our moments down the road, too. It doesn't mean we have to fight and look for the differences. I think that we can really make things happen. I'm really proud of what this, that the task force did. Also want to urge you, there's more information for you. We had committees. I was on the laws and barriers committee with Claire. We did great work. We got a longer report you can read. The other committees have those reports as well, so I'd love it if the, you know, the staff could make sure that the council has those, make sure that, that, you know, that they're, they're online. Let's see what else. And also, you know, the idea of setting up the identify, establish potential site, there's a committee of folks who are working on that, really rolling up their sleeves, coming up with something that, like Dignity Village in Portland, that will work. And a guy named Eric Tars has come to town in a couple of weeks. He's going to be meeting with council, and, you know, a national expert on this. So I'm really urging to talk to the committee of folks who are doing the research. When Eric Tars comes to town, really, you know, look at what he has to say. I think we can establish something that will work in this community and make Eugene an even better place to live. Thank you.
Just wanted to add to that. I don't know if every, I can't even remember if I sent it to everybody. I know I sent it to city manager and assistant city manager. We, Ken Newbeck sent out a, some examples from other cities of how, not exactly a Dignity Village, but, but a, different kinds of settings that have already been tried and have worked in other places. So there are a lot of things that we can, we can look at. I'm going to, Alan? Are you on the phone?
Maybe not.
Okay, well, then I've got Andrea and Mike in the queue, so why don't you guys start things out?
Well, Mayor, just point of order. Our next conversation is supposed to start at 12:45, and we've got 10 minutes, so I don't really know if this is, so I don't mean to be on the fast track and push my constituents or my peers here at the table along, but I do want to.
Yes, Mayor.
There is light on.
I'd like to.
Time warp.
So I do definitely want to.
I'm on the phone there.
Andrea and Mike in the queue.
Hello?
Watching it on TV. Alan's a little behind.
It's the time lag between the webcast and the real life. Sorry about that. Oh, I turned that off. I would just like to thank everybody that participated. I know it's a lot of work, and, and, and I was impressed with all the work that was done in the short period of time that proves the old adage that we can, if you give it my deadline, people can usually meet it if it's reasonable. And I think I might half off everybody that worked so hard to meet the 90-day deadline and come up with such great recommendations. I think I support everything that's in the, in the report, and, and I'm encouraged by it, and I want us to move forward. Then I guess the question I have is, what's the process for taking some of the immediate things that are identified in the gen item summary and moving them forward?
I think I, what I would say, maybe Michael had something else to say, but what I would say is we're going to listen to council and hear what you want to do from here, and we'll have a sense of how we want to move forward at the end of this conversation. So Andrea?
Is he done?
Are you done?
Yes, I was.
Are you sure?
Just making sure, Councilors Lincoln. So I would like to either put some motions on the table or ask staff to come back with my, to the members, staff to come back with some, language for some motions as soon as possible. I really want to know where we're at as far as the approval of the zoning change. Is that something that we need to give you a motion on, or is that just kind of one of those things that you, it'll come to us?
I'm suggesting that you, you put things out there that you want us to consider at the next, at a future day.
So when will be the next future day?
I, we'll, we'll, we'll put it on a calendar, but.
Yeah, what we'll do is prefer not to motion today, so it will be good to get the information back. And then what we will do is, based on a little bit of council conversation, which will help indicate urgency around that, what we will do is come back with another work session that has more of this fleshed out, so.
So do you want us to go down the list, or do you just want us to give you general?
Around the immediate stuff.
On the immediate stuff? Because I think that I hear, I know that there's urgency around it. Obviously, some part of the community has already picked out a site. Knowing whether or not council is supporting that, to me, is, is kind of a question. And I do think that the council and whole really needs to look at this and have a discussion on it before we go any farther, because this was a subcommittee, and the normal path that we go is that a subcommittee will send forth the work to the council, and the council will have that conversation. This is a first swipe at it, but there are things that I think that we really need to, that are emergent kind of thing, that I think that are kind of like no-brainers, and so I, I just want to make sure that we capture those.
So I'm just going to jump in here and say that what I think the goal of today is you to receive the report, begin to digest it. We will, we will set up a meeting to discuss where we go from, from here. That may lead to other particulars, but, but there'll be a soon.
As soon as possible.
Meeting to just pick up on.
Yeah, definitely. So you get the information, I would just echo that. We will take that, we'll come back to the council. I would suggest at that meeting, you can provide specific direction back to me on, let's go implement this.
You can think on the fly today.
Yeah. And so you'll have a chance, sooner than later, to give that specific direction.
Okay. I, disrespect, Mayor, this isn't on the fly. This has been out for a week, and this conversation has been going on in the community for months, and this isn't new information. This is all stuff that we know has been happening in the community.
Welcome to put anything you want out there for today.
So I'm, but I won't out of respect for staff, but I do want to ask a couple more questions. In regards to this work, this work that's been forwarded to us, there's also other city work that's happening, so I just would like to know when we come back with this. Where we're at with Envision Eugene, the police move, August moved out of the city, out of City Hall for us, so how is this going? I want to make sure that whatever we're embarking on doesn't get put off until after these things are done, and that there is actual city staff time available.
Yeah.
To work on these. I know we've got a lot going on, but I'm hoping that some of this stuff is going to be winding down, and I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up in public.
Okay, so we'll be able to talk about that then, too.
Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just share a couple of concerns and then maybe move more positively towards the sort of things I'd like to support and be a part of, and the things involved here that I'd like to, I'd like to see us move forward on. First, the idea of establishing a permanent homeless camp is a concern for me. It's a little snarky, but I've always thought it was slightly Orwellian to call it Dignity Village, because I, I don't, from my perspective, there's absolutely no dignity in a permanent homeless camp. And so I, I would hate to see us do that. I, while I certainly understand Pastor Dan's perspective here, I agree with him that the streets are a dangerous place, but what we don't talk about when we say it's going to happen anyway is, does the creation of that sort of environment create a, a higher potential instance of unsafe behaviors? Does bringing people collectively together with a number of different issues that they're dealing with in their life create a higher risk of people becoming unsafe? And that's what I'd like to have us talk about, is what do we know and what don't we know about the creation of such a place, and what does that mean in terms of people's safety? Because to get to the parts that I would support, I think there are a number of things in this report that I like and that I want to be a part of helping. From, the two major things for me are that I want to make sure that we're creating safety for vulnerable folks. That happens on a regular basis on the streets, that happens, and we need safe places for people to be. But we need to create a culture and an atmosphere of safety for everyone. I can absolutely get behind that. Number two, I'd like to see us doing, do things that actually provide people avenues for greater dignity. And what I mean by that are the, the kind of service station-type places that allow people to have a place for their stuff, that allow people to get cleaned up, that allow people to try and move their life in a different direction, and the kind of facilities that, that help them do that. I can always be supportive of that. I'm absolutely in favor of the things that we can do structurally to help people who are trying to make a difference in their own lives create greater dignity. But a permanent homeless camp, for me, is, is, there's no dignity in being permanently homeless, so.
Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. We certainly don't have enough time to, to really talk about all the, get into depth about the, the many things that, that came out of the meeting. And I'm, I'm excited about a smaller commission that will do some very deep and hard, shirt-sleeve work to really look at some of the issues. I'm impatient about some of these things, very impatient. There are some things that it just does not make sense that we're not doing at this point in time, some easy things like bathrooms, you know? I've experienced the same, the same situation where people have been walking around the quad saying, there's a bathroom here someplace? You know, if we have bathrooms, if we, well, I don't even need to finish a sentence. So, you know, things like that, I think administratively, we don't, we don't need to talk about that as a council. Let's open bathrooms for people, for crying out loud. And there are other things that seem pretty simple and, and easy to do, like the mission is asking for extra beds. They have the site for it, they have the place for it, they have the, almost have the zoning for it. And I know that Sarah has looked at it, and I know that John Uve looked at it also, and it's something that surely we could fast-track that and make sure that that element is, is looked at. As far as the other more detailed things, that are going to take a little bit more community involvement, a little bit more neighborhood involvement, and certainly a little bit more analysis as far as whether or not it meets codes, meets zoning regulations, meets the, the growth management policies of the city, for instance, it's going to take a little bit longer, and I'm anxious, the other thing I'm impatient about is to get the smaller commission started work as quickly as possible. I have time this afternoon, as a matter of fact. So, you know, it's, you know, there are some things on here that, that let's all be impatient about making it happen as quickly as we possibly can. The things that we can't do as quickly as, as quickly as others, let's study them and make sure that we do them right. But the things that can be done quickly, let's just get off, what do you get off of?
Dime.
The dime, thank you. Dime? Sixpence?
Well, it's 25 cents now.
Get off, get off the, the dime. And, you know, let's, let's make things happen that can happen immediately, because if people, as David has mentioned, are looking around for a place to go to the bathroom, Dan and I met yesterday for a long time, and we, we looked at the bushes that Dan is talking about, you know, it's, we, there are things we can do, let's do it.
Okay, how about George, you want to?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Well, you know, reserving, referring to potential sites, it's going to take more than one site. There just can't be one big site and group everyone together. We've, I think we've learned from Occupy Eugene, and certainly other, other, and, and the '93 experience at Austin Stadium shows that you cannot have singles, families, kids, and people with unaddressed mental health issues and drug dependencies of any kind all thrown together and think that that's going to work. They have to be separated out into categories. That's what Dignity Village does. They don't allow families with children there because one of their covenants is that, that your, your past criminal record doesn't matter. You can't use drugs or alcohol in the camp, but, and, and it's continually evolving. It's, they're reconstructing houses as people move out, because it is a transitional housing. It's not regarded as permanent housing, like, hey, you just get to move in there and that's your place for the rest of your life. In fact, I'll just read something very briefly. Designated by the Portland City Council as a transitional housing campground, Dignity Village falls under specific State of Oregon building codes governing. Village falls under specific State of Oregon building codes governing campgrounds. This provides a legal zoning status. Lack of building codes has shut down many other shanty town tent cities in the past. So that's something that we need to keep in mind. So we need, and when they say potential sites, that means potential sites, because you can't throw everybody in together. So it could be an open ground like that, could be, I mean, it's a potential site. Maybe, maybe there's an old building somewhere that could be fixed up for wet beds or something. I mean, you know, but anyway, that's, so that's, I think that's what it means is potential sites. And I don't think we're proposing a permanent shanty town or anything like that. It's called transitional housing. I think that's how we kind of need to look, to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to try to wrap this up. I wanted to ask Betty or George Bowling, if either one of them had any comments they wanted to make on this before we wrap it up, a question. Sure, go ahead.
I wonder if anyone's thought of using the empty jail beds for temporary shelter.
I didn't hear what she said.
She wanted people to thought of using empty jail beds.
Was that it, Betty?
No, for temporary shelter, it's, they're empty, I understand.
You know, I agree, I think that we should come up with a smaller committee and continue working on some of these issues. I do have some questions about the wording on the recommendations, you know, I've got to be very careful about waiving zoning codes, zoning land use codes and that, because I think we could find ourselves in some legal trouble if somebody wants to raise an issue about it. You know, I kind of agree with Mike. I think making an area a permanent homeless living area is, is not really helping the issue, it's not addressing the issue. To me, it's considering enabling the issue. It gives people that, that don't really care, that want to be homeless someplace to actually stay. So, you know, there's got to be, somewhere in there, there's got to be a happy median between the people that want to remain homeless, the people that are, for reasons beyond their control, are temporarily homeless. So we need to figure out how to work through those issues. And then the big question is, is how much is this going to cost the city? I think before we move forward with any of these recommendations, we need to find out, identify how much it's going to cost us and where that, that funding is going to come from. I mean, we're pretty lean right now as it is. I mean, look at the conversations that we're having at the, at the Budget Committee on arguing about $130,000 for LCAS and, you know, the money for the library and things. You know, I myself personally have quit doing things, going places that's going to cost the city money. Last night, $85 a ticket to get into the food for...
Chef's Night Out.
Chef's Night Out. To me, that $85 would be better spent on the library, better spent at LCAS. So, you know, we need to, we need to identify where this money's coming from, to fund these and have a real serious talk about what is going to suffer, you know, what other services the city provides is going to be suffering if we take money from other, other areas.
So we have another issue we're going to take up right now. I want to thank you all again and thank everyone who participated again very much. What I heard today, did you hear anybody say, let's not continue the discussion? So we'll have that next, bring these specific issues forward and try to get them in some priority list and go through them and figure out what, what we want to do with each of those. Thank you very much.
Just two points of clarity before we leave. There is a full binder available from all the materials throughout the task force, including the minutes, this report, this presentation, the roster and subcommittee reports will be available in the city manager's office. And further, the 13th and Chambers site, the Naval Reserve, former Naval Reserve site near Caesar E. Chavez School, that was only agreed upon for car camping purposes. I just want to make sure there's no mixed messages out there about the purposes of that site or so.
Getting torn down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
We hadn't torn it down, we could have.
Bring me again.
It's amazing.
So the next item is actually another related item.
You should talk to Brown about that. He's right back here.
Thank you.
What we could have done with that, if beds had to pay, we could have taken half more. It could have been...
Again, has to deal with our resources and how we use them and the need in the community. And this is a report on the council's Subcommittee on Human Service Funding, and I believe the upper court is going to...
Yes, he is.
I think so. Thank you.
Chris.
Which button goes forward?
I'm providing this report today for two reasons.
One, I do the short straw.
And you talk to...
You're it. And I talk a lot. And two, as kind of the instigator of this at the Budget Committee where this came out of, it's something that is kind of a follow-through for me in terms of carrying this on. And it's interesting that it's on the same agenda as the previous item, and yet this particular conversation has been going on for a lot longer. I have been actually having initial conversations about this for at least a couple of years, even before it came up at our Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee directed us to have some additional conversation around it. So this has been a challenge, the challenge of human service funding for a while. And you'll see as we go through this that financially, it has been on our agendas and on our budget discussions for, for quite a while. So we did form a Budget Committee through Budget Committee Motion at the last Budget Committee to explore options for securing stable and increased levels of funding for human services in the community. The membership was Councilors Brown, Farr, Ortiz, and myself. We met four times to talk about what our options might be. So this is all familiar territory for us as councilors, but there were many other folks who have been watching this very closely, because as you know, human service funding, not just at the city's role, has been suffering significantly. And so there's a high level of interest in knowing how we will continue to support something for which the demand has increased. So one of the first things we did was talk about, okay, if this were to succeed, what would be our best outcomes? And if this were to fail miserably, what would happen? We're all familiar with the best and worst outcomes exercise. And you can see here that some of the worst outcomes we can imagine were, we just keep on, keep on, nothing changes, that this current situation doesn't really find a resolution, we're not able to make any decision, and that services to vulnerable populations continue to erode. So this is a key slide we'll be coming back to over and over again, so I may refer you back to it, so kind of keep this one available. This is the state of Eugene's human service budget, and that includes the principal portion, which is our funding to the Human Services Commission, the HSC, and then other kinds of direct contracts and programs. The general funding base, this is the ongoing amount that we contribute to the Human Services Commission over the last six fiscal years, has been in the neighborhood of about $1 million. It has gone up a little bit over the last four years, but it, right now, in the year we were talking about, it was about a little over $1 million. In addition to that, there were some ongoing general fund-directed monies. Those are the monies that, Sue can probably tell you specifically what that $36,000 is, but in addition to that, we would allocate each year, this was the limited one-time money that would go towards specific kinds of things you see at the bottom, stabilization, Station 7, homeless initiatives, safe and sound. Each year, we would allocate some one-time money to support one of those things. I call that the American Idol budgeting, where someone would come in, they would make a presentation, and then we would feel or not feel compassion and we would award the money. That means that money is not stable, it's not permanent. You get it or you don't get it. And so each year, we would have to go into a budget discussion deciding whether somebody was going to get their funding or not. And the instability of that money, I think, is, was, was a major challenge. And as you can see, for fiscal year 12, that money goes down significantly. The other fund base is the CDBG money that goes into the Human Services Commission to support them as well, and that's why that money stays stable. For a total of between $1.5 and close to $2 million each year in HSC money. So we were cobbling together funds to make that amount of money, and so you could say part of that's stable, but a lot of that is not stable. In addition to that, you also look at the direct contracts and programs, which are also listed down below. The $300 and some odd thousand is principally money that goes into funding things such as cahoots. That's why you see that go up the last year, is when we were paying for the additional cahoots van. The other money below that, the $2 point some odd million, are the CDBG home and ARA monies that went in to support housing. The Housing Policy Board, for example, would allocate that money out into the grants. The Willack Kinsey Crossing and other things like that would use these funds to help support those programs. So when we put the committee together, one of the things we were really focusing on was which parts of this money did we want to talk about? And what did we want to do to try to create our best outcomes, which is how can we stabilize that money? We don't want to just keep going into our budget process each year and have this American Idol budgeting. We want to be able to assure people that their funding is relatively stable. So the key factors in determining how to approach that gap broke up into four kinds of areas. What types of services would be funded? What are the outcomes we would want for that funding? What kind of geographic area we would be covering? And then what kind of funding levels are we talking about? And we kind of broke each one of those into a continuum, where you could have something at the one end and something at the other end, and where along that continuum were we comfortable with regard to each of these questions? So on the first question, what type of services are we talking about? At one end, you have just the traditional human services, including Human Services Commission and direct contracts to providers. In other words, the status quo, what we're doing right now. Or the other end was, is it those things plus a whole broad range of social justice, equity, you know, wrapping it up into an entire philosophical package of a lot of different kinds of things, including perhaps the conversation we were just having earlier? What the committee, subcommittee said was, this conversation could go on for years if we want to try to talk on the broader sense. So in the limited number of meetings we have, the subcommittee tends to kind of be more down at the left, the lower end of the continuum. Let's talk about what we're already funding, let's talk about stabilizing what we've, what we've already got. The second continuum, which was, what are the outcomes we want to achieve? Do we want to just fund human services at the levels that we currently have? Or do we want to look at them, but maybe look at some outcomes and see if we need to make some changes? Or do we want to look at expanding what we can do? The subcommittee aspired to maybe see if there were some ways that things could be done better, but they're realistic about the fact, there's not a lot of additional money out there to expand a lot of outcomes and to do a lot of new stuff. So they tended to be more towards the middle, but they definitely see a value in looking at improvements or changes if they seemed like they could be a benefit to what we're doing. The third continuum was, okay, where are we talking about? Are we talking about just the city of Eugene? Or are we talking about some broader regional conversation? And the committee very quickly recognized that if this is a city of Eugene group made up of city of Eugene city councilors, we need to be talking about city of Eugene services and citizens. But that there may be a linkage to a larger regional or county-wide conversation if we bring in additional partners. So there could be the initial part we're talking about right now, which is a city of Eugene, call that Phase 1. And then there might be later on, a larger conversation where we might bring in the county, or we might bring in Springfield, or we might bring in Cottage Grove or Junction City or other areas. That could theoretically be a Phase 2. We're not talking about that today, but that's something to keep in your back, in the back of your mind for perhaps a conversation later. And finally, the fourth continuum was, how much money are we talking about? If we want to do these kinds of things, if we aspire to these outcomes, what is that going to cost? And at the one end, it's, okay, we've already got about $1 point something million that we consider to be, at the time, the stable funding. Could we add another $150,000 of that to represent an amount that's been pretty stable for HSC and just go forward with that? Or are we looking at some additional amount of money? And one would be to implement some sort of an alternative revenue source, some place to get additional money, to pay for a portion of the city of Eugene's human service budget, including Human Services Commission, which would be some amounts less than a couple of million dollars. That $2 million that we talked about before, this would be some additional source of revenue to cover the one-time American Idol portion of that funding. What could we think about to do that? And that's kind of where the subcommittee went. They didn't really want to look at trying to replace the entire human service funding, including the part from the general fund. So the subcommittee came up in this area. So what are those sources? If we want to even cross the first bridge, which is, are we willing to talk about revenue? What kind of revenues might, might we look at? Some of these are tried and true ones, we've looked at before, some of them we've talked more seriously about, and some of them we've abandoned relatively quickly. A restaurant tax, some sort of utility consumption tax, a public service fee, a levy, business license fees, payroll taxes. We've seen these all before. We've talked about all these before. Other communities and other jurisdictions have talked about these before. But we wanted to look at them again, to see, was there a nexus? Was there a way to connect these to some sort of an outcome? We also discussed the benefits and the liabilities of each one of these in terms of the factors on the right. And so it was once again, a thoughtful discussion about how each one of these revenues might be affected by those different factors. And we looked at them as closely as we could in the short amount of time. And so after the meetings, the group came up with a set of recommendations that they wanted to bring back to you. One around the level and the purpose of the funding. So they're looking at a way to stabilize ongoing funding at around $2 million, which would mean that if we assume that the current stable amount remains stable, then you would need about $600,000 or $700,000 more in stable funding in order to make that happen. And that would have to include the city of Eugene's revenue shortfall, reserve or contingency. We'd have to talk about what that, what that looks like. The mechanism, after looking at all the different options, the one that they agreed on as carrying forward and talking about, was either a utility consumption tax or a public service fee. And obviously, these are the things we need to talk about as a full body. This is just what the committee's bringing forward. Phase 2, the regional discussion, it's not defined, it may build off of some sort of a city solution, but that's off in the future. That's not really what we're talking about right now. So what do these preliminary revenue estimates look like? What would they be? If you went with a utility consumption tax, and these all presume that these would be somehow collected through a, through a utility mechanism, such as E-Web and the other utilities that charge customers within the Eugene area, what might that look like? If you take a typical household and you look at a utility consumption tax at a rate of, say, 0.3%, that could raise you about $700,000. And that's about 50 cents per household per month for consumption. If you look at just a straight, flat public service fee, just a consumption fee, a dollar a month would raise also about $700,000, and it would represent, obviously, about $12,000 a year per unit. So people who are paying their bills, which, from whichever utility serves inside the Eugene area, they pay an extra dollar a month to raise another $700,000. And this is basically what the committee came to when it finished its work, that we were going to come to you and say, we think that one of these two options, raising this kind of money, I think would be the viable choice for how to stabilize that funding. And that was where that conversation went. Since those conversations, the conversation has now changed. And the conversation has changed in terms of, we initially were looking at funding for human services, and that includes human service funding, it includes cahoots, it includes all the other kinds of revenues that we talk about, but now we have these additional pressures on our budget that we have just been talking about recently. The new general fund gap, which has gotten progressively larger, and we've had to deal with every year. We have conversations around public safety. If the county is going to back off jail beds, if there's going to be layoffs of sheriff's deputies, how does that affect us in terms of what our public safety funding needs to be? We just had a presentation from Public Works about the street bond and other needs around O and M for streets. We've done a tremendous job of keeping our streets going, and it's going to require additional funds to do that. Where does that money come from and how does it affect this conversation? And then we have also talked about our ongoing infrastructure, parks and O and M is just one example of that. So the conversation has changed since we talked before, but we still have to confront the fact that there is still a human service need. And the need didn't go away just because the conversation got more complicated. That's the challenge we're confronting right now, is we may have to be talking about additional items, but nothing came off the table, everything is still on the table. So as we pointed out before, when we were talking about Envision Eugene, we have to think of this in terms of a series of trade-offs. Because every decision we make is a, is a trade-off between factors. One is the trade-off of just staying with the status quo. We can't change it, we don't want to change it, we don't worry about changing, so we just leave everything the way it is and keep going forward. Or we think about new revenue. As I said earlier, that's the first bridge we have to cross. Are we willing to look at that because the alternative is to stay pretty much with the status quo? Inward focus versus outward focus. And by that, I mean, are we looking just within the city of Eugene and what the city of Eugene needs in order to fund its operations? Or are we looking at the city of Eugene in terms of its role with regard to the larger needs in the community, human services being one of them? The citizens of Eugene and their needs as a portion of what we are doing? Is there just the one need or the many needs? The human services on one side of the scale versus all of the other needs? The human services on one side of the scale versus all of the other needs that need to be talked about? And what is the role of the human service need within those many needs? Is it short-term or is it ongoing? We have a system in place now where we've got a little bit of stability. We also have a lot of instability based on one-time funding. Are we going to keep trying to address these issues in little short-term increments? Are we going to try to go for an ongoing, stable solution? Are we going to approach something from a unilateral standpoint, which is something we could do with a consumption tax or a utility fee? Those could be put in place by the city council as a matter of decision. Or would we look at an option that would go out and ask for an elective choice on the part of the citizens of Eugene? That is a conversation we need to talk about. What do we want to do? Are we going to talk about solutions that will divide us in terms of the solutions we want? Or are we going to try to come up with something that we could find a unifying element in? Something that we could all agree is what we want to have? And finally, what is possible to do versus tilting at windmills that we can never achieve? And by that, if we look at an option that does not have a realistic possibility of being achieved, we can spend a lot of time talking about something that will never happen. So we really need to focus, and this is what the committee tried to do, on what is doable? What is possible? What is within the realm of ability that we can achieve? But the discussion really needs to be, first and foremost, the degree to which the city is committed to its human resource, human services objectives, that it wants to say, yeah, we may need some new resources in order to do that. We can't just fund it with what we already have. If so, what are the needs we're going to fund? What mechanisms are we going to use? And when will this happen? Because timing is also very critical. Many, many of the people who provide human services in this area have suffered significant layoffs, cutbacks in services. People right now who are calling 211 are being referred to services that when they arrive, 2/3 of them are being told, we're the people who provide that service and we don't have the service anymore. We're out of money. 2/3 of the people who call 211 are being told, you can't get service because we've run out of money. We don't have it. So how will we address human service funding gaps or other programs? That's essentially where the committee is. Thank you for allowing us to put this together. And we've got 20 minutes left. We're not expecting decisions today, but I do think we want a provocative conversation.
So, thank you very much. I want to say something before I open up to the whole council. So, I'll do Andrea.
Well, thank you, George. George, thank you. Chris.
George. You're welcome.
Andrew, too. Both of you.
I think one, I think two.
That's a very good comprehension of what we came up with as end product, but it really doesn't dive into the meat of the conversations that we had at the table.
No. It doesn't.
Because one of the other options that we had asked staff to look at, and I don't, and I don't remember if there was a report, but E-Web, Janine Parisi did a very good job on one around the urban renewal district down at the waterfront and how if we, Councilor Brown had brought it up, that if, if we put that to bed, so to speak, how would that affect what's going on down there? And it was a pretty comprehensive one, and it kind of actually given me a lot of thought. And the, so, and then as far as the process itself, it was pretty good. I was, I am, I was still a little frustrated that we didn't bring our partners in on this a little bit. I reviewed the minutes a couple of times and it's, you know, and I just said, have we talked to E-Web? Have we let E-Web in on it yet? And I guess, the only thing I would say in defense of staff is that we weren't at this point yet to where we can say, this is what the council has agreed upon. What do you think? And so I just kind of wanted to make mention of that.
George?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious why, why in the PowerPoint presentation, the sunsetting of the Riverfront Urban Renewal District was not listed? Because we did discuss that. And why that somehow got sifted out from the total list of all the other options. I mean, it's in our packet. I just wonder why it wasn't on the PowerPoint. I don't know who can answer that. Anyone have an answer? No, nobody knows. It just went down, it just went down the rabbit hole.
Yeah, I think because we didn't really have an answer in terms of the use of it yet, I think it got left off. It didn't mean it was not going to be something that we could talk about. That's why the full report was there. But I think the, the ones that we were all, at least in my mind, more certain about having the conversation were those. I don't think there was, I don't think there was consensus within all of us that that was an option we wanted to put on the table, but we can certainly talk about it, absolutely.
Okay. Well, we will talk, well, I mean, hopefully we'll talk about it if I can get three other councillors to agree with me, because I'm going to submit a work session request to talk just about that. So I don't know if I can get it in the packet tomorrow, but it'll definitely be in the packet next Thursday. Thank you.
Good job, Chris. And thanks for taking the lead and making the presentation. There's not much I can add beyond what Chris said, other than it really was a, a good discussion that we had. And we did look at a lot of different things, some things that were not practicable, some things that were more practicable than others. And certainly, as Occupy Eugene entered into right during the middle of the conversation, it became a part of, certainly a part of my thinking as to how can we justify asking for more money for human services when we are indiscriminately almost giving money, back on December 15th, was the point in time where we gave $300,000 to, to the Occupy Eugene situation that was going on. Now, that money was, was dispersed in a different fashion, but, but it really didn't enter into the conversation. And it became a part of the conversation, as did the Riverfront Research Park, as did a number of other factors that just didn't have any wheels or practicability as far as the final report is concerned. So good job, Chris.
George Pauling, Mike Clark, and then back to you.
Yeah, I think it was good, good presentation and good information. There were a couple of points that I'd like to make. First of all, Chris, and this is for future references, please, when you're talking about the county's public safety, don't just limit it to the deputies and jail beds. There's a lot more that goes on at county level that the City of Eugene takes, you know, receives services for. The prevention, intervention, rehabilitation, juvenile justice system, and the DA's office. I think the DA's office is what's going to affect the city most, the cuts that are being made there. When they're not going to be prosecuting, you know, what I consider major misdemeanors and felony crimes, because they don't have the personnel. That's going to affect our citizens. So when you make reference to the county's public safety, don't just throw out the deputies and the jail beds. Another concern I have is, is, you know, we've had, we've had conversations with E-Web before about collecting some new revenue for us. And that has not been a good conversation. So before we get too far down the road, and like you said, we probably haven't had that conversation with E-Web, but because we're not there yet, we need to include them early on in the conversation. You know, and my concern is, how much slack, or how much are we going to, the City of Eugene, how much more are we going to pick up once the other agencies start making their cuts? I mean, there's only so much that we can give. And how do you designate who out there in our bigger community, not just the City of Eugene? How do you designate between whether or not they're a citizen of the city, or Springfield, or, or Lane County, when they come to one of these agencies asking for help? So that's a concern. You know, any, I think that any time that we're going out for a new tax of any kind, it's mandatory that it goes out to a vote. I've always been in favor of that, and I always will be. And if we're talking about adding the new tax for human services, or however you want to label it, I liked, liked your little graphic there. You know, why not throw in the conversation of adding on public safety, roads, the general fund gap monies? You know, we, what we have to do, and Betty has advocated this for many years, that I think ever since I've been on the council, I'm in my 10th year, maybe we need to look at a different way how we fund our, or structure our funding, our revenues. You know, that's going to be a bigger conversation. That may take conversation with, with our governmental partners throughout the county. But, you know, you know, maybe that's a conversation that we need to look at also.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is, first of all, I appreciate all the work. But it's, for me, more, this is a county-wide problem that requires a more comprehensive county-wide solution. The, the problems we're having at the county level with regard to public safety certainly affect us, but I've been asking for years, at what point do, you know, do the citizens of Eugene, when we don't have a functional jail, but we have other things that we're doing with our city funds, go, what's your responsibility to step up? This, for me, is, is one where we have certainly a responsibility, but the idea of creating a new tax in an economic environment like the one we're in, I, I think risks putting us in an economic death spiral in our community. I'm not interested in creating a new tax in the City of Eugene under any circumstances. But I think it is interesting that we're in the middle of a conversation about Envision Eugene, and we do have a mechanism by which we might get that $700,000 to $2 million that could be added to this process. We can quantify it. We know how much that means, based on the tax rate, that we would have to have in taxable property within the city limits of Eugene as an increase. We know, if we do the reverse math, how much we need to add to our tax base in order to get that money. And we're at the process right now of deciding, how much will we add to our community geographically and to our city limits and our urban growth area and give ourselves the opportunity to grow economically into the capacity to afford these things? And I, that wasn't a part of any of the discussion here. How do we create a more healthy economy so that the tax base grows in order to cover these needs that we have? And I'd like to, I'd like to see us have a more robust conversation about that, especially as it pertains to Envision Eugene.
Ron, Betty.
Thank you, and thank you, Mike. I was just about to agree with all the conservatives on the council, and you gave me something to disagree with.
Well, it's my role, Betty, and I'm happy to help.
If we, if we increase the tax base, we also, with a number of people, number of properties, we increase the number of services. Every time the police come to us and say, we need more police because the population has increased. The school system says, we need more money because the population has increased. It doesn't make more money if you increase the urban growth boundary. Then back to other things. Occupy, I don't think we gave money to Occupy. We gave money to regulate them, and they did not ask us for money. I just like us not to keep saying that Occupy cost us money, but they did not come to us for money. In fact, they were, right while we were voting, I voted against the money. I, I, because, and they were there shaking their heads. We don't need, we're not asking you for money. It was more to control them. I really, about the urban renewal, the Riverfront Urban Renewal, I really want to discuss that. But I don't think the money should be just for human services. It's, I, that we have lots of needs. But I think that that's money that's diverted that we could use again. I'm concerned whenever you talk about, well, I agree with George that we should have an election if we're going to have more taxes. And I agree with him that I've been bringing up revenue for 15 years, but a utility fee, we talk about anything like that, we're in danger of pushing people who are almost homeless into being homeless. That's utilities, these are a big problem for lots and lots of people. And a little bit more, people can say, well, it's only so much a month, but maybe they've never been in the situation where they don't have so much per month. You only do this much every month and this much, and, and you just don't have that money. And about limiting help to Eugene, I think I'm agreeing with Mike or George or both of them. I, I think if, if we make it too attractive, if we have, if our services are too attractive, then people from other places will come here for the services. I know when I was at Homeless Connect, I heard people saying, they came to Eugene, I talked to people, because we have better services. And it's a bigger, it's a bigger problem. It should be not just county-wide, but statewide. There was a time when we had homes for people who were mentally ill and homes for people who were poor. I used to be afraid I'd have to end up in the poor farm. But it should be, and I don't think it should be permanent, but temporary shelters certainly should be given. But Eugene can't do it for the whole state and the whole country. And I think I'm out.
Mayor, could I give in the queue?
Yes, Alan, go ahead.
I'd like to thank the four councillors on the committee. I think you did good work and I very much appreciate it. I like the direction that you're heading. And to me, the city is much more than just police services or, or public safety. There's a continuum of services that make up a city and make, make Eugene a special place and make a, a government what it is and make our community thrive. And so there's a whole lot more to a city than just public safety. And I'm real hard-pressed to say that we haven't stepped up to the plate for public safety. In the last three years, I asked staff to compile a, a number of how much money we've spent on police for FY10 through FY12, and it's over $23 million that we will have spent on, on police services and another 3 million, over 3 million on fire. So a total of over $26 million that we've spent on public safety in the last three years. It's hard for me, and so this is really a matter of equitable distribution of the dollars. I'm hard-pressed to say we haven't stepped up to the plate on public safety. I am hard-pressed to say we stepped up to the plate in human services. So I very much appreciate this direction that this committee has, has shown us, and I'm supportive of going on the next steps and thinking about it and talking about it some more. I know we don't have time to do it today, but I, I, I think from a, from a balanced perspective, this is, this is long overdue.
Chris?
Thank you for the, for the conversation. And I, I agree. I was using shorthand, so I'll use full hand next time. I think that's a good, that's a good point. And, and I like where everybody is. I think there is obviously a much larger conversation here. It was never intended that we, that we make this the complete conversation, because there are a lot of moving parts, particularly around what is our role, what is the larger role? You're right, it is, it's a county role. And part of the conversation was, if we wait for the county's solution, that may never be a solution. So how long do we wait versus do we step up? And I, I think there's a lot more conversation that needs to have, have around that. What our options are, yeah, I think that is exactly one of the trade-offs. Is this something that we do unilaterally or is something that we vote? I recognize unilateral is a divisive issue, and so we need to figure out how we want, how we want to handle that. What are all the funding options? These were the two that received the most general agreement, but there are many other ones we might talk about, and those would be part of the conversation. So the, the point today was to get it on your radar screen. And on your radar screen from the sense that if we just stay with the status quo, it's going to be a real short, real simple conversation, and a lot of things are going to suffer because the budget's going down, and that's across the board. So are we willing to talk about ways to, to at least help human services and possibly other funds by, by getting over the first hurdle of talking about additional revenues? For me, that's the first conversation. Are we willing to talk about additional revenues for whatever purpose, this being an important one to me? And I think that's where the conversation really begins.
I've got George and Pat in the queue, and I just want to make a comment. We're talking about services that we can't count on the county to be able to provide. We're talking about people coming from other places for services, but I just want to point out in terms of, for instance, the homeless, and when they do a homeless count in our area, most of the people that they count are local. They are not, maybe not local to the city, but they are local to the county. And in terms of our service provision, we are county seat. And so it is logical that people come to the county seat to get county services, and that happens in our city. We can't divest ourselves of the responsibility of being the county seat and providing county-wide services, so you have to bear that in mind. We share that with, with the county government, but there's no way you can separate those things. George Brown, you're next, and then Ted.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I forgot to thank Chris for leading the discussion today, and I'll correct that now. Thank you very much. You did a much better job than I ever could have known. I don't want to belabor this point, but the, because hopefully we'll be discussing it later in more detail. But the reason that I brought the sunsetting, the idea of sunsetting the Riverfront Urban Renewal District forward is because of all of the options presented, it's the only one that doesn't raise anybody's taxes. And we don't have to, you know, think about imposing a utility tax or putting it out for a vote. It's, it's the only one that, you know, is, is neutral in that, in that respect. You mean, you lose something if you do it that way, but you don't raise people's taxes. So I'll talk about it more later. Thank you.
And Pat, we'll wrap up with you.
I'll be very brief. You know, Councilor Clark brings up a good point, that the best way to add money into the budget is to add jobs and, and improve properties to increase our property tax base. That does, in fact, add money to the budget in, in the best way. Increasing taxes is never a happy occasion for whomever is doing it or whoever is receiving it. And, you know, Councilor Pauling, I, I agree with you. You know, 17 years ago, I first joined the city council, and the same conversation was happening 17 years ago, that why are we the ones that are always the ones stepping up to the plate and providing the services? But I think Mayor Percy added something that really comes back always as the answer, is that we are the center of the population, and when somebody gets turned out of the jail because there aren't enough beds being funded, they are turned out on Fifth Street and Eugene, and, and we ultimately provide the services that, that are, that are created by things like turning people out of the jail. So we're it. We're the, we're the belly button of the services.
All right, everybody. Thank you very much.
Ending on a belly button.